They, they, yeah, just gotta shape them up there. They told me I wasn't hitting it hard enough. Okay, let's begin the study session of April 6th. And we usually start with public comment, and this would be on items that are on the agenda. Do we have someone for public comment? Thanks, Jesse, and if so, please give us your name and address.
Hello, Council, my name is Jesse Hill, live at 2995 Chase Street. Here to talk, later today you'll talk about the East Wheat Ridge setbacks. I appreciate you guys having staff really work on that, and they did a great job in a short amount of time putting together some amendments to the code that are really gonna allow for some great things over on that side of the neighborhood and throughout Wheat Ridge, I believe, in general. When you get to it, you'll see there's proposed two amendments. Both, I believe, are great. The first one covers ninety percent of any issues, and really, the second one takes care of any kind of little flyers that we might have out there in the neighborhood, and generally moves us to keep the character of the neighborhood there and kind of bring a better, as it redevelops in the next few years, a visual line sight on the side setbacks, which are the main focus on this. So, again, appreciate the staff, really looking forward to, because it adds potential development on corner pieces that adds a, maybe upwards of four hundred square feet, what you wouldn't have before. You multiply that by a new development square footage price, you're talking well over a hundred thousand dollars in value of home there that's gonna pay dividends back to City of Wheat Ridge, help shore up budgets in the future. And all we did is keep the character of the neighborhood. So, again, big, big hands of applause for them. The good news, too, is kind of you guys expanded on staff to present some options on, hey, what's going on there in East Wheat Ridge, and do we have redevelopment? When is that wave gonna come? And I'm here to tell you, I think we are in the rule of three of where we're gonna see development happening. In Edgewater, some old scrapes have happened over the last year, and they're selling for five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, brand-new homes, and there's still pieces of property out there. I've personally found them, other people on the block are rentals, that we're gonna convert to new family homes and have new people in there. So, I'm really excited for that to have happened, and you're gonna see this dividends pay off in the next year alone on that corner. The other half of that, you know, direction of staff was to talk about neighborhood design standards. Personally, I would hold off on that at this point. You know, I'm not a huge fan of some of the contemporary designs out there, but I by no means would push, you know, I guess my opinions on others. And with their house, kind of looks like some of the box styles aren't mine, but there are what the new families like. I got plenty of friends who like it. I like something a little more traditional, but I think a bigger thing is seeing the neighborhood and scraping down some of these, honestly, shacks that weren't made to last this long there, and we're gonna get some great developments. I truly believe it's gonna fit in the neighborhood. So, the current code's great, I think, on that aspect, and gives a good flexibility for an envelope that allows for the neighborhood fit. So, thanks again, appreciate the time and directing staff. Hopefully, you guys will give them direction and push this forward and bring it to you at a council vote in the future, and we can move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. That's item number three. And we have another speaker.
Hello, my name is David Kueter. I'm here on behalf of the Active Transportation Advisory Team. I live at 5837 West Twenty-Ninth Avenue, and I'm here about the survey, but I've forgotten which number of the item.
It's okay. Citizen survey, number, item number four.
Yes, and Rachel emailed you all this afternoon with add-ons comments on the draft survey. We believe the phrasing of the questions can remind participants of our shared values and therefore provide more insightful responses for going forward. Specifically, as set forth in the email, we suggest a few tweaks to some of the questions specifically regarding active transportation. And question eight, we recommend replacing mass transit planning with connectivity to public transit. And in questions twenty-eight and twenty-nine, instead of the support opposed, which is kind of inherently divisive language, we recommend phrasing the questions as finding out what, how people value the various options, and also to add some language regarding the bicycle and pedestrian improvements to emphasize the human, the people, that it's people biking and people walking. And then, in regards to question twenty-nine, Rachel's email had a few recommendations as to ways to make sure we're clarifying what the various aspects that we're asking people to comment on and making sure that those are distinguished from each other. And thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing the results of the survey.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Sorry, Kueter, K-U-E-T-E-R.
Thank you.
Did you have a copy of that? Oh, you just announced it.
I, you know, I didn't get it in time to print it out. The...
We have the email. We have the email here.
Okay. Apparently, we have the email, so we're good. All right. Any other public comment?
Hi, Kim Calomino, forty-seventy Dover Street. That's C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, and my comments are also some suggestions on your survey. On question number three, when it asks for reasons why you live in Wheat Ridge, I would encourage you to also ask about amenities, dining and entertainment, evidence of economic growth and general improvement in the community. Number four, when you're asking about the following characteristics as they relate to Wheat Ridge, I would encourage you to ask about openness of the community to, and these are choices, progress, change, growth, advancement, improvements, et cetera. Question number five, which asks about what events they may have participated in the last five, or the last twelve months. Community festival or other event, I think, might be worth calling out specifically to speak about the kinds of events that take place on Thirty-Eighth Avenue in particular. Number six, when it's asking about the services provided by the City of Wheat Ridge, I would include you, encourage you to include something about how the city keeps the community informed of issues through community meetings, publications, newsletters, and other kinds of communication with the community. On question number eight, when you're asking them to rate aspects of transportation or connectivity within the City of Wheat Ridge, would encourage you to ask about the safety of travel within the community. On number fifteen, where you're asking about the impression of the city's employees, I would encourage you to add professionalism as a characteristic of our staff. Number six, oh, I'm sorry, number fif, sorry, six, twenty-four, too many notes. This question is currently stated as, how important, if at all, are each of the following features for Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth? I would encourage you to just call it Thirty-Eighth Avenue Main Street. We know that we're engaged in discussions or potential discussions about limiting the length of the improvements along there, and suggesting that we're talking about that entire length might mislead people or result in different responses. And actually, still on twenty-four, I would add something about, rather than talking about slowing traffic, perhaps replacing that with something that talks about pedestrian-friendly, two- to three-lane section to include safe pedestrian and safe usage of the area, safe pedestrian usage of the area. Twenty-five, which asks voters to talk about why they think the ballot issue on Thirty-Eighth Avenue project was defeated, you might want to add, I supported the measure, as a choice that the respondent might make. You might want to add another question that asks whether or not the citizens would support the city expending resources to incentivize storefront or other improvements to businesses in the community, if what we would like to see is some beautification and upgrading along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, citizens might want the opportunity to suggest to you that they support those expenditures. Question thirty.
Oh, Ms. Calomino, I'm afraid your time's up.
I'm almost done. Sorry. Question thirty, again, is talking about two A and why it might have been defeated. I think you should encourage, you should include the question or the option to indicate that your, the projects you would have supported were not included, or that you supported the measure. And then the questions in the end on demographics, where you ask about income and race, you might want to offer the option to say, I prefer not to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, let's move on to our agenda.
Joyce, I wanted to say something about item number three as a citizen, and also just as a former city councilman, sitting where you're sitting, council person, excuse me. Item number three is, I think, drastic. I can appreciate everything that Jesse said. It's drastic. It may end up being controversial, and I would really encourage you to talk to your constituents long and hard about this and what it's gonna mean, not just out there in the neighborhoods, but up and down Thirty-Eighth. And this, this could end up being another road diet kind of issue. So, don't just have one little study session and say, okay, move forward, let's do it. You better, I would really caution you to talk to people about this before you make a decision about it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on, then, to staff reports, item number one, A. Software renewal.
This item is regarding the continuance of the Granicus Services Renewal. Councilmember DeTulio had asked for this item to be pulled from the last council meeting, and I spoke with him earlier today, and he did want me to express to the rest of council that he does support the staff recommendation included in this memo before you. Staff has changed our recommendation, bringing forward a one-year services renewal agreement with Granicus at the April thirteenth city council meeting. So, that amount will be thirteen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-three dollars and forty cents, again, for a one-year renewal, and that includes the amount that we've paid to date in order to keep video streaming services active and current. I also included several bits of information in the latter part of this memorandum explaining issues, addressing issues that were brought up regarding the quality of our Channel Eight production, specifically city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and study sessions. Those quality issues will be addressed when we have the opportunity to upgrade the equipment within the council chambers. So, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the Granicus renewal and the one-year, one-year contract that we'll be bringing forward on April thirteenth, as well as any of the equipment issues, if you have any questions. Happy to answer those.
Questions from council?
You're welcome.
Mr. Starker.
Thank you very much, Heather. Good, good memo here. Our previous proposal for Granicus was going to be a three-year renewal.
It was.
And do we, do we have any benefits for going three years rather than an annual renewal basis?
At this point in time, no. I'd recommend going with the one-year annual renewal, and certainly a multi-year contract is something we can look at in the future, but I think at this point in time, it's most cost-effective for the city to go with the one-year.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, then we'll bring that to, you'll bring that to council?
April thirteenth.
Okay, that'll be fine. Okay, Code Enforcement Strategies update. Chief Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I have Jim Lorenz and Mary McKenna here tonight. If you ask me any questions that are too complicated, I'll turn, turn this microphone over to them. But we wanted to give council an update on our Code Enforcement Strategies program and where we're at. You remember, on January fifth, we brought to council a plan to expand sort of two neighborhood projects and a commercial corridor project from a code enforcement, you know, perspective, using a problem-solving approach that relied on, on education and of property owners and residents, and then some enforcement strategies to deal with, you know, quality of life issues, code, you know, which are essentially nuisance code issues, but also some traffic and crime issues. And we got approval from council to hire two part-time temporary employees, non-benefited employees for 2015, and council approved a budget supplemental for a vehicle. So, from, on the staffing perspective, we have hired two temporary community service officers. They are onboard now, they've been in training, and they will be operational beginning next week. So, we'll start, and I'll get into some details on the process we're gonna start, but they've received their classroom training and their field training, and will be ready to hit the street, so to speak, next week. The vehicle that council approved, the small utility pickup truck, has been ordered, has not yet been delivered, but we think we can manage the addition of these individuals, and we anticipate receiving that vehicle, I think, in June of this year. So, that, that will help us, 'cause we'll be bringing on our other seasonals to help us with code enforcement and, and our work in our parks beginning in May, so we'll have a need for that vehicle. We had identified in our previous meeting with council, three areas for this project to, to work. Two neighborhoods in District, one in District Two, one in District Four, and then a corridor project. And council may recall that when we looked at corridor projects, we made a determination that there's already a lot of work and attention being paid to the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor. We did talk about both the Kipling and the Wadsworth corridors as well, but there are a lot of activities with the Pell Grant on the Wadsworth corridor and the Kipling Bike Trail on the Kipling corridor. So, we decided to look at Forty-Fourth Avenue as our commercial corridor, essentially from our city boundaries on the east of Harland Street, west to Wadsworth Boulevard. We pulled our staffs together and had a discussion about how, how do we market or identify these areas, and I think all of council's aware of our East Wheat Ridge community project, community policing project, where we've identified essentially that area from Sheridan to Harland as, as a priority area over the last four years to pay attention to, because the crime rate was a little higher there. So, we've identified two neighborhoods. The first is what we're going to refer, if you look at the PowerPoint presentation that's attached to your packet, I wasn't able to pull it up here to, to go over that, and I was afraid Councilmember DeTulio would be here and give me a hard time about my long PowerPoints. So, I'm just gonna, gonna point the paper here today. But the District Two project, we're gonna call it Teller Street Station Project, and there's a historical significance to that. When Denver used to have a trolley line that came out to Wheat Ridge, it actually, there was actually a Teller Street Station. So, we're using a little bit of history there in naming and identifying that area, but that's essentially the area north of Forty-Fourth Avenue, east of Harland to Pierce Street, and Forty-Fourth to essentially Forty-Eighth Avenue. It's a small, a small area there. I think, we think we can have a pretty positive impact on that area. The District Four project is gonna have boundaries essentially from Brentwood Street to Garrison Street and Forty-Fourth Avenue to the I-70 Frontage Road. We're gonna call that the Clearvale Neighborhood Project. That is actually the name of that subdivision that goes back and dates back to nineteen fifty-five. So, we've identified those two areas as, as project areas. The commercial project, as I discussed, is essentially gonna be Forty-Fourth Avenue from Harland to Wadsworth. We're gonna call that our, the East Forty-Fourth Corridor Project, and that'll be the third of the three projects that we'll get started, and I'll explain to you our, our project's strategy. In your packet, we've put together a sort of a presentation of, of how we hope that this particular project flows, and we're going to have three project teams that are gonna be working on that, these, these three projects. And we may have some crossover there in regards, certainly in regards to supervision and the management of the projects, but, but also in terms of the folks that will be involved. But essentially, the idea is to have a, one of these temporary CSOs assigned to each of these projects, a lead CSO, so it'll be another member of our community services team, a patrol officer is somebody that we wanna have assigned to that, and folks from community development, whether they be planners or somebody from our building inspector's side that are part of these strategy teams. And these strategy teams, the idea is to send them out first to do an assessment of these three areas, to see, what do we see visibly, you know, in each of these areas that needs to be addressed from a nuisance code, a building code sort of perspective. And when we come back, then, we'll then construct a education strategy of how we're gonna outreach to these neighborhoods. You'll remember, in our East Wheat Ridge project, we actually had ten neighborhood meetings in that entire area. We don't envision having ten meetings in these areas, but probably one or two meetings where we'll invite residents and property owners to attend those meetings so that we can talk to them, you know, about the project, what the city's trying to do. We'll talk to them about the issues that we see in these particular areas, and we'll talk to them about resources they have available, so we'll probably have some other stakeholders involved in this. In the previous East Wheat Ridge project, we had Public Works, we had Parks, we had Live Well Wheat Ridge, we had Wheat Ridge 2020, and we're certainly going to look at engaging those stakeholders, as well as, from the commercial perspective, engaging the Wheat Ridge Business Association and the Forty-Fourth Avenue Businesses, Business Owners Association to, to help us strategize in regards to this. But we'll essentially present to them, here's what we're seeing in your particular neighborhoods, here are the problems, here are the issues, here are some resources for you to, to assist you, or at least give you direction and, and how to bring your properties into compliance. And it's always a good idea to listen to them about what they are saying the problems are, because we may get some information there from a crime or traffic or a life quality perspective that can give us some direction. We also are branding this particular effort as the Wheat Ridge TLC Project, and TLC stands for Traffic, Life Quality, and Crime. And sort of a different way of taking, you know, this project and, and saying, how can we identify this with, with some, a, a, a marketing logo so that we can, you know, try to express to community members, property owners, what we're really trying to do here. So, my staff came up with that. I wouldn't have thought of that on my own, but we had a pretty creative way of, of going through and trying to find a name for this particular project. So, our project teams will begin to work. There'll be a strategy group that'll oversee those project teams. That strategy group will consist of Ken Johnstone, myself, the city manager, city attorney, when and if we need them, some of the other stakeholders that we have out there, and we'll be meeting at least on a monthly or bimonthly basis. Now, here's the other thing that we really are going to need to make this work, and that's council's engagement in, in this project. Bud can attest to the East Wheat Ridge, Jerry could as well, that over the course of the last two years have been very engaged in that East Wheat Ridge project. And having elected officials engaged in some of those meetings, coming to those meetings and listening, talking about the city's vision and what we're trying to do is, is gonna be critical to, to our success. And I think it's even gonna be more critical when we start talking to property owners along Forty-Fourth Avenue. What are we trying to do? What are we trying to, to accomplish? How, where are we gonna compromise? If we compromise? And then, it'll give us a better idea, I think, together, from a strategy perspective, what we're gonna need in 2016 and beyond to make this, these kinds of efforts work more effectively in, in the city. So, that's how we're, we're gonna put this all together and, and work over the course of the year. I suspect, over the course of the year, this is probably gonna change a little bit, and we may be trying some different strategies. So, I don't look at any change as a failure, I, I look at it as an opportunity to learn and to, to, to engage our, our community members and making Wheat Ridge a more attractive, you know, community in terms of what we're trying to do. We're also looking at bringing onboard somebody to help us advertise, market this. We've talked to a couple marketers the city's used, and we, we think for about fifteen hundred, you know, to maybe twenty-four hundred dollars, we can, we can get a good marketing effort on, on what our efforts are. We can market them on the website, different Facebook pages, connections, mayor's newsletters, and some of those, some of those other media efforts that we can, we can use. So, so we're ready to kick this off, we're ready to be engaged, but we really need, more than anything else, you know, some, some involvement by our elected officials to, to start moving this forward as we start meeting. I'd be happy, and my staff would be happy, to answer any questions any of you might have.
Start with Genevieve.
Darn it.
It's not a question, but really a comment. We've talked before with CDOT about the grass area between I-70 and the Frontage Road and all the weeds and the trash and stuff that collects there. I'm just wondering, as part of what your project you're working on, if maybe we couldn't engage CDOT again, because it's an ongoing issue as far as the weeds and the mowing of the grassy area. The city has an agreement to mow part of it, but then, following up with CDOT to mow the rest of it and address the trash has been an issue, and Sherry Jan from our local representative has also been involved in that, too. So, I'm just wondering if we might be able to add that into that, your project, as maybe something we can work with them on.
We can certainly engage Scott and Public Works in that, I know, and Patrick may wanna speak to this. I know we've tried to get CDOT to, to commit to cleaning those areas up, and I know we've talked about even doing something different with some of those, those intersections, and Joyce actually oversees the contract on, you know, cleaning up of some rightaways, so...
We do, yeah. We worked with CDOT over the last year, and we do have an agreement in place on, on who's responsible for what, but as, I think you're right, that it's just getting them to actually do it, and when they have the time. So, you know, another option, I think we, we just need to continue working with them. If they're not gonna be responsive, I think another option is to look at picking that area under the city's contract for right-of-way maintenance and cleaning. It'd be an expense, but if it's something that is not getting done, it might be something that we just need to do.
I just think that's something you're gonna hear about.
Well, and I'm sure we are, and we've talked about it, you know, from a staff perspective every year. I mean, it's, it is an eyesore, so...
And make sure you put me down on your list of contacts, 'cause I'd be happy to help.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. I think I had Mr. Fitzgerald.
Chief, this is a very thorough document. I congratulate you and your staff putting this together. In the document, you asked for direction in certain areas. For example, what are priorities, council's priorities in commercial areas is something you asked for, and other specific priorities, so we probably ought to be thinking about that. But am I correct that you also asked for another vehicle?
We had asked for a vehicle back in January.
This is a second vehicle.
No, we're not asking for a second vehicle, it was just the one vehicle that you've already approved.
Okay.
Just letting you know that that's been ordered and should be here in June.
Okay, so you're not asking for another vehicle? And you said that one of your issues was office space. So, have you solved that problem?
No, we have not.
Have you looked at space in the rec center?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, well, at least during the day, I see some empty rooms there, but I, I know that they...
Well, and we really need to have those seasonal employees working under the direction of, of, of our CSO, so, so we make it work. It's, it's tight, but it's, but it's workable.
Okay, what about that? Okay, what about the house at Prospect Park? Which is in that house? Is that, that storage, is it not? Yeah?
Yes, it's storage for the Little League's football and baseball in the basement, but upstairs, they meet in there, but it's not being used at the present time.
So that would be a possible office location?
It is, it is. Doesn't have Wi-Fi or any technology associated with the house, but it could certainly be investigated if that was a direction.
Okay, and one more question. Chief, how about renting a storefront on Thirty-Eighth that makes the whole project very visible? You know, we have a lot of empty storefronts.
You know, I think, you know, looking at doing those things are all, you know, viable kinds of options. It's a matter of doing the research on it, determining the, you know, what the cost is, and then determining, you know, where we get the best bang for the buck, you know, in terms of what we're, we're doing. I did a similar thing at, similar kind of project when I worked for Lakewood in terms of storefronts. So they're, you know, they take a lot of work in ensuring that you get the infrastructure that you need, you know, in place. And then supervision is always a challenge if, if you've got operations in different kinds of places. But if that's, you know, council's direction and, and, and looking in those kinds of things, we can certainly, over the course of this project, look at those as options.
Have you come up with a price tag over and above? I, I mean, I, I kind of came, came up with a price tag, but I was assuming you were asking for a second vehicle, so my figures are wrong.
You know, I think what we had told council back in January on this project is, is one of the ideas in terms of hiring our, the seasonals and making them temporary throughout the course of the year was to give us an opportunity to see what that price tag might look like. So we certainly, you know, moving forward, have had a lot of brainstorming ideas about what we could do from a grants perspective, what we could do from, you know, an improvement perspective, you know, in terms of actually branding and having sort of a neighborhood, you know, kind of improvement, a piece of what we do. And that's really the idea of, of doing the project during the course of this year, to see where we need funding and, and what that might look like, both from a personnel perspective and a capital perspective. So I'm not really ready to, to tell you what I think, other than what we've spent on this already. I think, you know, we talked, we got a budget supplemental approved for the vehicle and for the cost of the salaries. We'll certainly rely a little bit on, you know, the, the grant dollars that we have for these, these kinds of projects, do some dumpster days. But as we look at, at doing a lot of these different things, trying to, to enhance those or having grant programs for facade improvement or sign improvement or parking lot improvements, those, those kinds of things, that'll probably be a, a 2016, you know, staff, staff report to council to say, this is what we were able to do. If we had this amount of money, we could do this.
So what I hear you saying is you're not really ready for direction yet, or, or are you ready for direction?
Well, if you've got direction or you've got ideas in which you'd like to see us do, we've identified these three areas as, as project areas. So we are asking, or, and we've asked, you know, before in our last meeting, are these three areas good with council? And is this where you want us to, to focus our time, efforts, and attention?
Just to remind council that, that there was a memo attached to this, to your, in your packet, that was from the January 5th study session. That's where we did receive quite a bit of this direction already. So this is really just more of an update on letting you know that this is how we're moving forward.
Seems there's a couple items. Sure, there's finances, both either for extra officers, there's a cleanup project, PR around it, et cetera.
That's all been approved. This is just an update.
That's all been approved. Okay, great.
This is just an update where we're at.
I'm trying to think, I think I had Bud beforehand. Nope. Let's go with this one right here. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Meta Mayor. With respect to the Clear Creek Station project area, just by the outline that you have in the presentation, it, it indicates that the Otis Street entrance to Clear Creek Trail isn't necessarily included in that area. But if crime is an element of this and there is some movement along the Clear Creek Trail coming from Denver into Wheat Ridge, it would be my hope that that, and I've seen some discarded furniture and mattresses along that Otis Street frontage road, as well as just knowing that there's a lot of graffiti in that area as well, that that kind of, it could have a potential pouring into the neighborhood and.
Well, this will be our, this will be the project area. That will not keep us from doing our, our normal, regular code enforcement activities. And, you know, if, if we pick up on the fact that we may have to expand an area and stuff, we can do that. But we wanted to have small, targetable areas that we thought were win projects. So if we expand the scope of it, then we have to expand the scope of, of, of having more people, and we didn't want to do that initially. We wanted to see if this would work.
Sure. And then I guess when we look at these targeted areas, it would be my suggestion that we look at the data behind this area and, and identify the largest property owners in these areas, whether it be landlords, the school district, commercial property owners, churches or whoever, and have sort of a sit-down with them to explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, to see what resources or what efforts they can bring to this as well. So it's more of a concerted effort with those larger property owners to make sure that they are onboard and that they're fully participating, as much as all the neighbors will be participating as well. But trying to meet with those individuals ahead of time or come up with some way to target them with this information so that they're made aware of it, that would be one element that I'd like to at least, you know, see if there's some, if there's one or two landlords that own a majority of the multifamily in that area or what have you. I'm not sure exactly what it looks like, but something like that may be appropriate. And then with respect to the school district, and, and I'm not suggesting this is a good space for the office space you're looking for, but if the school district can offer up Martinson as sort of a, a pit stop or a meeting place, or some kind of community gathering spot for a cleanup of the neighborhood day, or something where we can work with them to make that sort of a gathering spot, as you will, even though it's somewhat closed down right now, I'd like to see if we can do something around that, just because that is kind of the, the hub of the neighborhood. And we've done a lot of good work in getting them to clean up that property presently, but we want to make sure that they continue along with those lines as well. And then if there are any local nonprofits like Brothers Re-Development or others that work with seniors to help with painting of homes and some of those efforts, if we can work with them or identify any potential partnerships there to continue to try to promote seniors that are able to paint their homes or.
We do that right now, just, just as a matter of practice. Jewish Family Center, Senior Resource Center, Brothers Re-Development, Crossroads Church, a couple of the other churches, so.
Sure, okay. But other than that, I think that you've got a good game plan going, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Seth. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. So I have a question for you, and it was kind of based off of, so everybody knows, I think, I remember maybe six or nine months ago that my head was spinning around about what Wadsworth looked like, especially in the summer and spring, and the sidewalks. And I know in, earlier in your presentation, you had made mention that you guys did not choose Wadsworth because of the Pell study. But that, my understanding, I mean, will be still some time away. I guess my, my issue with not putting a little more focus on Wadsworth is, it's, it's a busy street, and it's, to me, a lot of how people might see Wheat Ridge. And I think I made mention that if you blindfolded me and took me from Arvada to Wheat Ridge, I would know the difference because of the way that Wadsworth and, and how the street and, and some of the businesses along the street are kept up. So I guess I would still, although I think these are great focus areas, I don't know that I would want to ignore Wadsworth. One, because I do think that's a very busy gateway to our city. And two, I don't, I mean, I don't know the timeline of the Pell study, but I don't think it's, you know, immediately at our door that some of that stuff should be ignored. And, and so I guess I just would like some feedback, or I'd actually like to provide a little direction that I would like to see some efforts put on Wadsworth if possible, because I do think there's a lot of businesses that are in need of some help.
So we will, we work all the areas in the city. We try to, try to address all the areas in the city. Really, the focus of, of, of this project was, was to see how we could bring council's goal of, of making the community more attractive, you know, to some form of reality, and get an idea of what, what those costs associated with that might be. So Wadsworth is, is a corridor that we look at, that we go through, just like the other quarters in the city, and we're not going to stop doing that. But when you talk about going into, you know, a neighborhood area and trying to make that, you know, the, the approach to engage a community in, in what those issues are, and do that from a staffing perspective, it's pretty staffing intensive. And, and so when we've brought this to council before and talked, I mean, certainly hearing concerns and, and share those, but we've only got so much staff. So, you know, we'll, we'll continue to do the Wadsworth-Kipling Thirty-Eighth, Thirty-Second as, as we, as we normally do. But if you want a focused effort, I only have, have the staffing to really do, you know, one commercial corridor in the manner in which we're talking about doing. Meetings with property owners and, and the grants and, and looking at, at all of that. I, I don't have the staff to do, to do others. So if you want us to do Wadsworth, if that's your, your direction in terms of an overall project, then we're going to have to go back to the table and say, how are we going to do that outside of the scope of how we normally approach our corridors in terms of dealing with, with, with some of the, you know, the property issues that, that we've got going on throughout.
Well, you know, I appreciate that, and I, I just, I'm just trying to, you know, I, I understand that you only have so much staff and we're going to have only so much dollars to maybe do some upgrades or help with this and, and those types of things. But I guess, I mean, I'm driving down Forty-Fourth and I'm driving down Wadsworth. To me, I guess, who, what street is more of our, the face of Wheat Ridge? And I think it's, it's, it's Wadsworth. And, and so I guess, you know, to me, if I had to pick Forty-Fourth or Wadsworth, I would pick Wadsworth, and then maybe focus on a couple businesses on Forty-Fourth that we know we've had several complaints on, that we're working on, that we would business as usual. I guess to me, I just, I just feel Wadsworth is a more important, well, I don't want to say more important, because I don't want people to think Forty-Fourth isn't important either. But I think that Wadsworth and, and some of the, the businesses and, and some of the, even some of the curb and gutter that's, like, your car has to avoid. I will tell you, I've had a couple people call me on the curb and gutter on Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth there, like, when people are crossing, that it's falling apart. And yeah, granted, it might be, the Pell study would take care of that, and that's, you know, that's a state highway and not us. But, you know, at some point, you know, similar to the weeds that are on the frontage road, at some point, we might need to take care of it as a city, because it might hurt somebody. But I personally, and this is just me, but I, I believe that there's a lot more opportunity on Wadsworth with our everyday, as usual, opportunities on Forty-Fourth.
And, and I, and I certainly, you know, hear what you're saying, but Forty-Fourth Avenue has a lot of blight. It's, it's sort of been, you know, corridor that has not been, has not had the attention paid to it that, that Wadsworth has. So when we look at, we, when we look at nuisance kinds of violations, you know, there, there are more nuisance kind of violations and blight that we see on Forty-Fourth, particularly on the east end, than we do on, on Wadsworth. We'll still pay attention to Wadsworth and deal with the weeds and, and the other nuisance kinds of things. But you've got a big development going on, potentially at Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, if that comes to fruition or not. You've got that, that project going on, you've got sort of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue stuff that's going on with Main Street, you've got this Pell study, you know, that's, that's up and coming. You really have a, a much more vibrant corridor there than you, than you do on the east side. And, and we had, you know, have, have brought this, this forward before, and council's direction has been, you know, to give this Forty-Fourth Avenue one a, you know, a shot. We'll, we'll certainly do what we always do on Wadsworth and Kipling and those kinds of places. But if, if it's council's direction to look at Wadsworth and we're going to have to change our focus, it's going to delay what we're doing.
Okay.
From a commercial corridor perspective. Meta Mayor?
Just a second, I think I had Mr. Starker, but does council want to think about this in changing direction as far as Wadsworth or Forty-Fourth, or, you know, it might be that we want to question that, but let me hear from Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Chief. And as you know, we've worked together on the East Wheat Ridge project, and I was a little unsure from your memo whether we were going to still be able to provide some kind of services, particularly the dumpster program was very popular with the Wheat Ridge citizens on the east side, and whether we were going to have some of those services available to continue that program, if not in the, in the full fashion that we have over the last couple of years, but at least as a, as a remediation going forward.
We will continue our East Wheat Ridge efforts. It probably won't be at the level that we have in the past, but Commander Hammond has still assigned that project, and we'll still be working it. We've taken some of that, that grant funding that we've got for community policing projects, and we're going to target some of it, you know, to the I-70 and Kipling corridor to deal with some issues we have there, and also this Forty-Fourth Avenue corridor that we've identified District Two and Four.
Okay, and I would like to, to also offer my services as we, you know, as we become advocates on city council for this program, because I think it's of, of good value. Thank you.
Mr. Urban, I believe.
With respect to the discussion about whether we are looking at Wadsworth or whether we're looking at Forty-Fourth, and I think the, the reason that the Pell study comes into play here is that it's almost like we're cleaning the kitchen before we do the remodeling. And we're, we're looking at significant remodeling of Wadsworth as a whole, whereas on Forty-Fourth, a program like this might have a greater impact on Forty-Fourth than this project might have on Wadsworth as a whole, because there is just, it's a more concerted effort with respect to this strip of Forty-Fourth. So I would be in favor of, of keeping it focused on Forty-Fourth, just for the simple fact that I think it would have a, a greater impact on the specific blight issues that we see on Forty-Fourth, whereas with Wadsworth, knowing that our plan is to put significant investment into Wadsworth, that that is going to cause the property owners along Wadsworth to take a second look at their property, and we can use that as an enticement to encourage them to move forward to cleaning up their property. But Forty, with Forty-Fourth, we don't have any of those plans necessarily in place to be revitalizing Forty-Fourth. So that's one way that I think we can show some attention to Forty-Fourth is by providing this type of service. So that would be my two cents.
Any other thoughts on the two? Whether we should stay with our original plan of Forty-Fourth as well, you know, the whole Second, Second and Fourth District, or whether we want to concentrate a little bit more on Wadsworth?
Well, I agree that Forty, Wadsworth needs help. But at this, for this plan that you've outlined, I'm really interested in the neighborhoods being targeted and, and Forty-Fourth for this particular program. But for the future, I definitely agree for some other project, Forty-Fourth needs some help. But for now, it's the neighborhoods that, that I would love to see these resources come to the neighborhoods, so.
And, and, and just to get to sort of Christie's point, we're going to learn on, on, on doing this. This is a pretty ambitious, you know, effort, and, and I think that, that looking at these two neighborhoods, we'll, 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 we're going to learn things. And looking at this corridor approach, we're going to learn things too. And, and my hope would be, you know, at the end, end of this year and into January of next year, that we can come back and, and have a, a much deeper discussion with council in regards to what that, that looks like. And there's nothing that, that says that we can't change our focus. I mean, the idea would be to continue our efforts and maybe identify other areas that are in need in the city, you know, for 2016 and 2017, and that would be part of the, that would be part of, of our ongoing efforts to sort of get the city where, where I think you all envision it to be. And Wadsworth is certainly a part of that discussion, as is Kipling and Thirty-Second and Thirty-Eighth as well, so.
Okay, this was mostly as a report. However, I hear a couple of counselors who are, want to join in and, and be helpful. I myself will be, be glad I'll be available for any of those meetings or whatever, and Ms. Davis has got her hand up.
So I, I, I'm available to help too, but I'm still going to push Wadsworth. I completely agree, because I think it's, it's terrible. I mean, I think it's terrible. Regardless, Pell, I mean, so we'll put some pretty sidewalks in, and the people still won't keep the weeds out of their rocks, and, you know, by midsummer, it's up to my knees. And I just think it's, it's inexcusable. And I know my head was spinning the last time, and it's not spinning this time, but I still don't want it to go ignored, and this plan I'm okay with, but I'm not, you know, I, I'm disappointed at Wadsworth that more work won't be done with that regardless.
I think that'll keep them really on their toes there. All right, are we contented now? We got what we need? Thank you, Chief. Good job, as usual. Ms. Mannwaring, I believe you're on deck here, I believe that, or you're on, you're up to bat.
Thank you. So we have a presentation for you tonight on the draft plan of the new Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'd like to introduce Bob Easton on my right and Chris Trupinski from Green Play Incorporated. We contracted with them in 2014, and we've been working since September gathering data and input from the community to develop the plan. So we're proud of the plan we're presenting tonight. It's a very comprehensive document, and Bob will walk you through it, both the process that was used to gather the information, some of the information, a summary of the information, as well as recommendations for the future. And I will be bringing this back to a regular council meeting for formal adoption in the near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Joyce. Mayor, council members, we're with Green Play LLC, and we were, as Joyce indicated, retained back in October to work with your staff and your community to put together a master plan update for your Parks and Recreation programs and Parks and Recreation functions. Before we proceed with our presentation, I would like to express our thanks to Joyce and to her staff. They were most accommodating to us as we went through the process. It's always difficult to come into a community that you don't necessarily have the same familiarity that you do with others, and Joyce and her staff have done a wonderful job of helping us out and everything from finding parks to collecting information and all of that. So we do thank you for the time and effort that you put together. The master plan that we put together, that you have, I assume you have in your packet, really is a function of a number of different processes that we've gone through over the last, okay, Chris, over the last year. We started out with a needs assessment, and what takes place when we do that is that we gather public input through focus groups, through online feedback, through formal citizen survey, and we also take a look at demographics and trends in the park and recreation business and in other communities. We also performed an inventory and what we call a level of service analysis, where we actually had people go out in the field and visit all of your park sites, do a complete inventory mapping, listing of various components and the condition of those components throughout your park system. We put all of that together in a findings report that we've reviewed with staff and with your Parks Advisory Board, and our point this evening now is to bring some recommendations to council that are a result of this assessment and our observations and conclusions reached through the process up to this point. Some information that you may already be aware of, but things that we've collected that turned out to be very relevant to the process for us, just a quick demographic summary, and I won't read through all of these, I think maybe one of the key ones is the fact that the median age in Wheat Ridge is 44.6 years, which is eight years higher than the national average, and I think if you drop down to the fourth bullet point, and I've actually heard this referred to as the senior tsunami in the last week or so, but the baby boomers, I'm assuming we all know the definition of that, roughly 51% of your population is 45 and older, and those, you'll see that show up later on when we talk a little bit about programs and other programming needs. And you also have a lot of people that have lived in this community for a long time. On average, people have lived in the community of Wheat Ridge for over 16 years, which I think is a very positive item. As we go through the public process and the matter of collecting information, we came across a number of recurring themes, and I think the important things are, for the most part, very positive. Your community feels that you provide a high level of service, both in your programs and parks, that you have well-maintained facilities. There's a lot of comments that came forward regarding the Green Belt area, and we'll talk about that a little bit here in a few minutes. And some of the issues that were not necessarily positive or negative, but items that people brought up and wanted to see addressed, were things like special events locations, a need for updating selected parks and facilities, some communication items, marketing items regarding your programs, and some capacity constraints primarily with facilities such as your active adult center, recreation center, and again, the issue of the aging population and program needs there. So those basically came up in just about every forum that we conducted as we went through the assessment process. We also did a mailed-out survey. We had 3,000 of those delivered, 343 were returned, which is a very good response rate that allows us a margin of error of about 5.3%. The survey, along with the public forums and some of the inline contacts that we had, allowed us to make contact in one way or another with right around 500 residents of the area, and not only property owners, but renters. And when you combine all of those sources, we're quite pleased with the fact that we were able to make that number of contacts. Some of the main things that came up in the survey, as far as the level at which folks feel their needs are being met by the city, you can see on a scale of one to five here that there were a number of major items that graded out very high, including the community and neighborhood parks, your recreation center and fitness facilities, overall facilities and services provided by the department, trails and access to the Green Belt area. All of those are items that people felt where their needs were being met and that they were pleased with. The main group of issues that we identified, top five priorities that came out through the survey, was a response from people for the need to take care of and revitalize what you have, and that's particularly in relation to maintenance and operations of park facilities and centers. There was an issue of safety and security, just in general, as far as within the park system and on the trails, just general need for, a thought for priority of beautification of public areas in general. We've heard a couple of things here this evening about connectivity and trails and alternative transportation. People see your park and trail system as a component in a citywide plan for those kind of issues, and positive activities for youth. All of those were among the top five priorities that came back through the survey process. One of the questions we asked is how, what are some of the most important areas that the city could do, if they were addressed, that would make a difference for people? And the number one item is that they wanted to be more aware of what is available. People are still asking for more informations about your programs. Pricing, the issue of pricing for recreation programs is always one that comes up in the course of a survey like this. Again, the condition of maintenance of park facilities and personal safety again came up as a, also was a major issue. When we asked the question about future facilities and amenities and people's top three priorities, clearly at 38%, the issue of trails came up as the number one priority. We don't find that unusual. It traditionally does come up in most of the communities that we take a look at, and it's an issue for a lot of folks just because of the popularity of hiking and biking throughout the country. Weight rooms, cardio, fitness space through the recreation center was the second item. Clear Creek River access, which again relates to your Green Belt property. An interesting little anomaly in terms of dog park, you do have a dog park, you have a relatively new one, and we're thinking that that result was, goes back to one of the other items that we looked at in terms of awareness. I think people are looking that you potentially need a dog park, when in reality, maybe they just need to find out or know where the one that you have is located. And then the next couple items that, right around that 20% number, outdoor pool, and again, beautification flower beds and streetscaping areas. So those were the main responses that we got to when we asked what people thought the top three priorities were. We also went through and did a program analysis. I'm not going to read through all of these. The good thing that we found with a lot of the survey responses was that you have a good program mix with a variety of youth and adult recreation program opportunities. There's a strong emphasis on health and wellness. It also came up quite frequently about outgoing existing facilities and that capacity issue In an interesting comparison here, we talked with focus groups, which are normally smaller groups of 15 or 20 people, versus the survey results, and if you look at the two compared, one of the main topics that came up with our focus groups was providing an expression of need for additional teen and senior-based programming. If you look at the chart next to that on this slide, the actual teen programming issue was much further down on the scale through the survey responses. So we did get some diversity in the responses, and I think a lot of that just strictly depends on the kind of, on the ages and demographics of folks that did respond to the surveys. We had a little bit different demographic there between the two groups, but in general, we found that those two sources gave us very similar information. One of the things that we asked about was how's the best way to get the word out? Clearly, your existing program brochure and activity guide is the one that people rely on the most, but the internet and the website communication is catching up, and it will continue to catch up. And our basic program recommendations at this point are a little bit further detailed on page 108 of the actual document, but the main things that came out of the program area as we looked at this was a demand or an inquiry from a lot of your citizens about additional special events and opportunities for special events and locations, expanded program hours at the recreation center, more programs for seniors and, again, this baby boomer term, and also taking a look at creating a teen programming council. We also liked that the communications and marketing issue, because that came up a number of different times as we went through the process, and in working with your staff, a number of the solutions or ways to address that were already ongoing through Joyce and her staff, and we've talked about it, identified the need for adding some direct page links on your registration information, developing perhaps some additional off-site program marketing and promotions, and appointing additional staff person to coordinate and communicate work with your citywide IT staff to meet the needs of the recreation department as well. The next major item that was completed was, as I mentioned earlier, a visit to all of your park sites to do, create a number of different maps and come up with a listing of components. This particular one, we took a look at access to park sites as far as walkability and came up with this grid, and Chris, if we go on to the next pie chart, we found that, oh, I can't find the number now here. Yeah, the values are missing. Oh, that's right, it was, I'm trying to think, was it 80, no, it was 72%. Seventy, yeah, 72% of your community at this point is within a 10-minute walking distance of park location, which is very, very good. Go ahead. The other thing is that we created for your staff and as part of our research, a, what we call an atlas, which provides a mapping of each park site and a listing of the components of that park site, and also recommendations on various improvements that might need to be done to those individual sites. So the staff has been provided that as an additional supplemental document. And we took that information and put together a number of different mappings. This is just a sample of that, the system components map, which talks about the various locations of the parks and the individual components with those. And the general assessment findings on the park site of things is that your park sites are very well distributed and generally very well maintained, that you have a variety of amenities, which is typical of a community of this size. We did indicate and find some discrepancies on some GIS data as far as boundaries and general locations of park sites, and we've made a recommendation that your GIS department take a further look at that and verify and straighten out some issues that we have with there. Nothing major, but there are some issues. ADA access, there's limited access in some of your park sites, again, which is a reflection of the age of some of those. Any other thing that we found out that I'm sure you're already aware of is that the schools in your area vary greatly in the quality and the programs and the access to facilities that might necessarily complement your park system. And the major recommendations from the park section, which are contained on page 101 of the overall report, we're recommending at this point that two of your signature parks, the Prospect Park and Anderson Park, that there should be a master planning effort to take a look at redevelopment and upgrading both of those park sites. We're recommending that historic facilities could be expanded to include some additional interpretive and landscaping improvements. Again, the issue of ADA access, continuing to up- Again, the issue of ADA access, continuing to upgrade your playgrounds on a regular basis. You have a large enough inventory in with use and just the transition of playground use. You're probably in a mode right now with the number of playgrounds that you have to be needing to look at replacing at least one a year on pretty much a permanent basis just because of the lifespan of a playground and how many of them that you that you have. The master plan itself, also on page ninety-six, includes a site by site listing of each one of your park sites, general condition, and a recommendation for improvements at those Again, this is just again some of the mapping that we put together for the Green Belt area. The response that we got from the survey was very positive as far as looking at the Green Belt as an asset to the community and also looking for the need to improve particularly connectivity, some of the rest areas and additional access from various components or positions along the Green Belt. But there's no question that that's viewed as a major asset to the community and also would say that the primary interest from those that we spoke to was in terms of preservation and limited development of that area. And I think I just pretty much covered most of that. One, I guess, one thing, there's a term that we've used here in the report called waysides. That's just strictly a synonym, if you will, of the term rest area. Basically, there's a number of spots along that Green Belt that lend themselves to somebody just pulling off the trail and sitting and either resting or just reflecting on on a view. And that's what the term waysides means. It's just simply a rest area, a stopping point along the direction of the Green Belt. Go ahead. We did take a look at some financial aspects and recommendations and our understanding is your public arts fund continues to be funded. Open space funding, obviously, you still have your attributable share. One of the things that we did find, and Joyce may have already shared this with you, there's a little bit less open space funding these days through the Historic Joint Venture Program. And that's more, I think, a change of philosophy and perhaps even leadership at the open space department. But all of the park and recreation agencies in Jefferson County, I think, are experiencing a little bit less funding made available through that traditional joint venture program. So there's a little bit less income coming your direction or or capital funding perhaps through that program at this point. And probably the key thing is, I'm sure you're all aware, your sinking fund for your recreation center, we're making a recommendation or comment that there's really need to develop some strategies to replace that fund that's expected to expire over the next two to three years. And then also hopefully to implement some financial strategies that will help you to continue what is a very good cost recovery rate with your current operations so that you're not looking at taking additional resources from from your current budget. Last but not least, we did take a look at your maintenance operations. One of the things that we've provided to your staff is a list of maintenance standards. And we've also taken a look at dividing maintenance operations into three different levels depending upon the nature and character of the park site and the intensity of maintenance required. That information has been provided to your staff, and I know they're in the process of working with that a little bit to accommodate or get it to fit your individual maintenance programs. And one of the major themes in terms of the overall park recommendations here is just to take a look at putting together what we call an ongoing capital repair program, which would allow you to continue to address the aging of facilities and some lifecycle costing and the ability to replace things like playgrounds and tennis courts as they go through their expected life cycle. And that's that's really difficult to do if you don't have a means of setting aside some some funds to help create the opportunity to do that. From all of this, we came up again with the major recommendations in the plan that are contained basically in the pages between one hundred and one fifteen on the plan that you've got. But we also really the the key as far as future improvements or development recommendation really lies in three areas, and that's to make improvements to your existing facilities, which is reflected in our report as the redevelopment of Anderson Park and Prospect Park. There's also significant interest in the demands that are being put on the recreation center at this point in terms of use and expansion. And and there's a strong recommendation throughout the process for an expansion of the recreation center. Again, the Green Belt area, expanding that, preserving and dealing with the whole issue of connectivity through trails provided by adjoining agencies, but also within your city boundaries. And then last but not least, some suggestions and thoughts on expanding also your existing active adult center. I think if I were to summarize in two or three sentences, I think the best way to summarize this is you're doing a great job. Your citizens seem to be generally pleased with what you're doing in terms of park and recreation facilities. You do have some facilities that have have aged over the last few years that are going to need attention in the near future. And the programming aspects of the aging population is something that every park and recreation agency throughout the country is dealing with right now. And you're not you're not going to be able to avoid dealing with that as well. So those are really the keys. But the other major, I think, recommendation was to do a development study on the Green Belt issue. And we would encourage, because of the level of interest, that when you get to that point, that it be a very interactive public process. There are an awful lot of people out there that have an interest in the Green Belt area.
Thank you. That was pretty thorough. Done a great job. Do we have some questions, though? Ms. Wooden?
Thank you very much. I did have a question on the program recommendations. You said that citizens wanted more special events. Did that come from the focus groups?
It came primarily from the focus groups, but there was also a pretty strong response. And I don't know whether we had that in one of the slides or not. It came from both. There was a lot of discussion in focus group, but it scored pretty high in this in the survey as well.
And I was just curious if they if if examples were given or what people were saying by special events, what they're looking for, I guess.
Well, the general feeling is that people are looking for something to do for a four to maybe six hour timeframe on a weekend, a family event where they can on a Saturday show up with the kids at ten and be done by three or four in the afternoon kind of thing. And it could be everything from kite day, which I think you already have here. We see a lot of things centered around food and eating, you know, so anything you can offer that has food, that kind of stuff. Physical activity, attaching that to holidays. One of the things you find, and I if you if you look at the Denver Post and other places, if you look at the listing of festivals and things to do on a typical weekend, you can go in and find forty of them in the middle of the summer, depending. I think the thought was more something localized here. There was a sense that people would rather stay here for those kind of special events than going to another community. The sky's the limit, but they're also expensive to do, and they require an awful lot of time and effort spent on logistics.
Right.
But they are a great community builder, too.
I'd love to do more of those. I think that's great to hear that people are wanting that.
I was just just going to say, our Easter egg hunt has gone from, you know, of course, over the years, from one hundred and fifty, three hundred, we had twelve hundred
Oh, my God.
last Saturday. So.
Yeah, I'd love for us to develop more special events, but I agree with what you said, that there's a lot of cost and people, power, staffing, resources put into that. And then, again, I also really like your create the teen programming council, and I think that's a wonderful idea. And if that happens, however you need help, I'd love to help with that.
Mr. Starker had a question?
Thank you very much. Very interesting report. I noticed on on some of the priorities that your survey indicated was in the beautification and streetscape that we that we have in the city. And we have a we have a few areas that I know that I think the Parks Department takes care of streetscaping, perhaps Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Sheridan and and Harlan. I think we do that. We take care of the sign and landscaping around Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. And I don't know what other sort of streetscaping areas that we have. I know that we have one on Twenty-Ninth between Sheridan and Fenton. I think we water the trees, but we really haven't streetscaped that and whether that might be an opportunity. And I don't know if there's other sort of boulevard type avenues that that would fall into that category.
Well, certainly, we've met on what does the Wadsworth look like in the Pell Study with landscape medians and that type of thing. So, yeah, it's really whatever streetscape projects are out there, how how can we be involved with that, you know, based on, I guess, the information that we know it's important to the community?
Terrific. Thank you.
I I caught the importance that we do need to look at the fact that the recreation center fund is depleting, and we will have to be aware of that. And in addition to that depletion, which is helping the maintenance, the overall running of is it the recreation center? Yeah. Then you also mentioned a capital repair program needed. Is that we're talking funding or I'm sure that the logistics of it, you've probably got that handled quite well?
Well, there is there is funding involved. There is no question about it. The various components that you have in the park system, again, I'll use the the existence of all those playgrounds out there, they wear out, and that's good. That's why you put them in.
They're being used.
Right. But it's much easier to deal with those kind of needs on an ongoing basis so that you have a regular replacement program for those kind of things. Because if not, you get in a situation where if you if you repair all your tennis courts in one year.
They'll all wear out the same.
They're all going to wear out ten years from now. And on a on a long-term basis, it's better to do that on a, if you will, a reasonable annual program that frankly ought to be suggested to you by your staff based on the priorities that they come up with and because they know what's getting used and what's wearing out The issue of funding is definitely there, and the the struggle that you all have then is how that fits in with other priorities, obviously, citywide. But I would strongly encourage you to take a look at that because an ongoing a lack of an ongoing program can very quickly turn into a multimillion dollar issue of deferred maintenance and becomes much more difficult to deal with.
So just to remind, council, we do have that in place. We would like to formalize that a little bit more. But when during the budget presentations, you if you recall, you'll see that in the open space fund and the conservation trust fund, there's ongoing dollars set aside for court resurfacing, ADA implementation, one playground a year. This year, it's Stites, next year, it's Boyd's. So, you know, we are using our conservation trust fund and open space fund for the purposes of maintaining our parks and then also trying to develop our new ones. So we'd love to I'd love to have more money, we just go for all of it. But, you know, we do rely on some of those grants as well.
Mr. Fitzgerald, thank you, Joyce.
How do our fees compared to our neighbors' fees, like Apex and so on?
They are similar. We do a market analysis every year. We raise the recreation center fees twenty-five cents this year, and so they're they're similar.
It seems like when I'm at the rec center, we have very many people who live outside the district. Do you have a number on on that?
Well, I don't off the top of my head, but we like that quite a bit because that helps our revenue. And we know that you're going to be seeing, Heather has written on council action form that we need to do in a supplemental budget appropriation for the expenditures at the recreation center. But the revenue is also forty-one thousand higher than predicted. So we know we're busy, and we do like those out of district folks because they help keep our fees down.
I actually heard people talking about that at the rec center. Do you think we have room to raise out of district fees more?
Our fee policy states that those fees will be based on market. So unless we, you know, it's always there's a price point where you price people, you know, out of coming. So it's a volume versus do I want less people for the same amount of money? Will we get more money and more people? You know, I don't have I don't have that scientific answer.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to either the survey participants or the users of our system, has there been any identification of the migration across the city? I live in eastern Wheat Ridge. I carpool with another eastern Wheat Ridge resident to the rec center. That's about a five mile round trip per day. And I'm curious as to what other migrations occur with respect to maybe southern Wheat Ridge going into the Green Belt or any sort of information on on those patterns or I guess my point is to consider what is the priority or the ability to consider some additional recreation facilities on the eastern side of Wheat Ridge with respect to a rec center or some other amenity of that nature?
I don't know that we looked at those.
Yeah. I we we haven't. I don't have an analysis of that data. It'd be interesting to find out. We can certainly do that. In terms of looking at a satellite center on the east side, I think it's just a policy decision and a funding issue. We did hear, and it is also my philosophy, to sustain what we have economically, and and that is would be difficult to sustain on the path we're on right now with the amount of staff we have. So it's obviously more economically functional for us to have everything in one place, which hopefully is somewhat in the middle of the city. And anecdotally, we hear about all the people that are coming over, you know, from the east side of Wheat Ridge. So but I don't have, you know, scientific data on that without running an analysis on the database that we have for people that sign up for passes. And of course, people that drop in, we don't have any data.
Sure. And my my one question to that end is if there were to be any kind of recreational facility or facility in Wheat, in Eastern Wheat Ridge, if that were to draw more residents from Denver over, because those facilities might be better than what they're, what's available to them, that would might alleviate some of those economic concerns.
Ms. Davis?
So, to your point, I had recommended that about a year ago, and there's a site that I think we're all aware of that's right next to Hopper Hollow, that I, I had thought, oh, that'd be great, we could have a little satellite, you know, like Twenty-four Hour Fitness has, how they're named different things, like Twenty-four Hour Fitness Sport and Twenty-four, you know, depending on the size and what's available. And I know that when we were doing the research around Two A and Two B, that was a question that those folks asked to, to the people in, on that side, or on the east side, and if I recollect, that they did not feel that they needed one in that area. But that was, I, I had kind of the same thinking, and I know it was surveyed when we were looking at the Two A.
Yeah, I think you're right. There was definitely some interest, but I don't think it, it rose to the top that we would maybe put priority, yeah, but that may change and increase.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you. We have a, we have Clear Creek that runs the, the length of our city. Have we looked at the possibility, and I don't know whether we have the hydrology to support or what the, what the ramifications would be to have more aquatic-based activities on that, and whether that's tremendously expensive, or, or whether we have the facilities in the waterway itself to be able to, to make another recreation, another type of recreational activity?
Me, too. I, I think, you know, what I'd really like to recommend to council is that green play did help us with a portion of looking at the Green Belt, but not in the detail that I would like to see happen, which would include a visitor study. Who is down there? Where are they coming from? It's considered a regional attraction. What can we do to provide access to the water? Do we want to provide access to the water? All of those questions, I think, would be helpful, and I try not to use the word development of the Green Belt because I think it is misleading. We don't really want to develop the Green Belt. We want to, what was, what was the word I substituted besides develop?
Utilize.
Just utilize, or create, enhance the usage, and create that master plan that says, this is really what needs to happen down there over a ten-year period when funding allows, because we have a, you know, we do have a trail, the trail needs to be replaced periodically. We have a section that's probably coming up for replacement. There's, there's just a lot of things down there. One of the recommendations was that our trailheads were inconsistent with the information that we provided. We don't have really appropriate signage. There's just several things, I think, that could really enhance the experience. We don't have any interpretive signage or very much interpretive programming, and of course, those are all resource issues, but I would really like to recommend that we take a look at the Green Belt separately and decide what, what you'd like to see happen down there. It's a busy place, so.
Is there some thoughts on that from council members?
I, I would just, I would say that that's one of the main reasons people in the Denver Metro area come to Wheat Ridge is because of the Green Belt, and I, I don't think it's because of the Urban Art Gallery we have down there with respect to some of the graffiti, but I'd like to see that that is somehow ameliorated or fixed in some way. I, I know it's somewhat of a difficult task because I can't ima, I look at some of the graffiti that goes on it, and I can't imagine how they're able to get to the wall that they're, that they're, right, so I think that that plays a part of it as well as how do we sort of reduce some of that activity down there as well, but that is sort of one of the, the, it's, in some areas, it's an excluded area or sort of a quiet area, and that's important, but at the same time, it does present a safety risk and also just a blight risk with respect to the graffiti and the whatnot down there, so it's kind of a double-edged sword.
Any other comments on the Green Belt, or, nope? Any other questions, then? We will be looking at this, it'll come to us for...
Yeah. Coming up here, a week or so, a couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, I think we're good, then. Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number three. It is zoning setbacks requirements.
East Wheat Ridge.
Ken Johnstone and Lauren Mikulak coming to the table.
Good evening. So, we are here to talk about a specific zoning code amendment that came up at a March Second study session. March Second of this year, we came to council with a list of zoning code recommendations for amendments to be considered in 2015, and we got a good direction from council on that. During the same meeting, or prior to that meeting, we'd received an email from a constituent suggesting that we take a look, that council take a look at an issue related to East Wheat Ridge, and whether there were certain zoning code setback requirements, notably the street side yard setback requirements that were potentially impeding people's ability to reinvest in their property at East Wheat Ridge. So, City Council did include in your direction on March Second to take a look at that, and as it turned out, we decided that was a good one to take a look at first. We had some initial ideas about it. We were generally aware of some of the issues in East Wheat Ridge in general, so we jumped right into it. The street side yard setback, I guess, presents challenges for existing corner lots, which are substandard in width, and there's certainly a number of those in East Wheat Ridge. Maybe to state the obvious, but much of East Wheat Ridge was, or all of really, East Wheat Ridge was plotted well before the city was incorporated, well before the city or even the county established zoning, so there's many lots, many structures that are nonconforming in regards to lot width, and structures that are nonconforming in terms of various requirements, most notably setbacks. So, we were, we were glad to get an opportunity to take a look at it. Lauren Mikulak has really taken the lead in term of doing the research. She's a whiz in GIS, so was able to really get some good analysis of the East Wheat Ridge area, both in terms of confirming that there are many lots that are substandard in width, but also taking a kind of a macro look at lot sizes and other nonconforming issues. So, we feel like we had some good data to work with to come forward and make some recommendations. We, in terms of, there's really two issues. There's the issue of expanding an existing structure versus the issue of scraping an existing structure and starting from new. For the former, when someone wants to add on to an existing structure, back when we amended the code in 2009, we actually anticipated the, the potential problem of, of people wanting to expand a structure that already violates a setback, whether it be a side setback, or rear setback, or front setback. So, we made provisions in those series of code amendments that allows people to basically continue the same line of nonconformity. So, if you're encroaching by five feet into a required setback, you can add on to your structure with that same encroachment. So, we think that's a pretty good approach when someone wants to expand on an existing structure, but really, the issue came up a month ago about what if somebody wants to scrape, and we perhaps don't do as good a job of addressing that, because once you scrape, then you have to play by the new rules, and that's when this, this stricter street side yard setback comes up. So, when we, when we took a, took a look at it, I think, while there still is the option to have a individual lot-by-lot variance request, I think we, we really did think that the issue that had been identified is a real issue. I mean, if you think about a, what is a fairly typical fifty or sixty lot width in East Wheat Ridge, and then you apply a side yard setback of, let's say, five feet, and a, a street side yard setback of probably at least twenty-five feet, you're at thirty feet, right? So, thirty feet of their width of their lot is taken by setback requirements. So, we really did think it was a legitimate issue, and potentially an issue citywide in the fact that we just have a fairly strict street side yard setback standpoint. There's often a latitude that if you have a corner lot, that your front setback maybe is consistent, but your street side yard setback is lesser than, than would be your front street setback. So, that's not uncommon for codes to address that. So, that said, we've, we've come up with two recommended code amendments that, at the end of the day, we think are fairly simple, but we think make sense and will be effective, and are in line with preserving the character of the area. The first one would be a code amendment that would apply to all residential zoning districts in the city that are, for lots that are sixty feet or less in width. And the, the change in the code substantively would be that the street side yard setback be reduced by fifty percent. So, if the setback would otherwise be thirty feet, it would drop down to fifteen feet. If it were a twenty-foot side, a street setback, it would drop down to ten. So, still a fairly substantial setback for a narrower lot. Just looking at an example, perhaps, of a, of a sixty-foot lot that had a twenty-five foot setback, they'd still have a twelve-and-a-half foot setback from the street side yard, a five-foot setback from the interior side yards. They'd still had, let's round up to eighteen feet of, of setback between the two side yards. That's still thirty percent of their lot that's taken up by side setbacks, but, but we think this provision also at the same time gives them forty-two feet to work with, right? So, they've, they've got a reasonable footprint as opposed to the thirty feet that they'd have to work with under the existing regulatory structure. So, that's code amendment number one that we would suggest. Code amendment number two really builds on some existing regulations that we already have in place that allow, in, in all, again, in all residential districts, but this applies most generally on East Wheat Ridge, that if, if the lots in the surrounding areas of your particular lot already have violations in the front yard setback or in the rear yard setback, you're allowed to take basically an average of those existing conditions. So, if the front setback would otherwise be twenty-five feet, but you look at your block and everyone, the average of existing structures is twenty feet, that's your setback. So, we want to apply that same logic to the street side yard setback, so that if the surrounding lots adjacent to you also have an encroachment from existing conditions into that street side yard setback, you'd be allowed the lesser of the new approach that we're proposing on the, on the fifty percent reduction, or the reduction based on existing conditions. We also, while we were on the topic, we also did take a look at kind of a bigger issue that came up with council at a more macro level of, you know, do we have a regulatory environment that would allow someone to scrape a structure that has passed its useful life and rebuild something new? And I think, long story short, we, we think, we, we don't think we have any significant issues that would be impeding that. There's a few kind of macro issues to consider relative to development standards. We have lot coverage requirements, which are typically forty percent maximum lot coverage. The average lot size that Lauren determined for, was it three or four of the kind of older residential subdivisions in East, East Wheat Ridge, the average lot size is about just over sixty-seven hundred square feet. So, based on a forty percent lot coverage, you're allowed first-floor building footprint of twenty-seven hundred rough numbers, square feet. A portion of that's probably going to be a garage, but you're still looking at probably over two thousand square feet in first-floor coverage. Additionally, we have a thirty-five-foot maximum building height in all these zoning districts, which allows very generously, generously to do a two-story construction. So, right then, you're, you know, you're taking that up to, you know, four thousand square foot home potentially. And really, realistically, you can do a three-story construction as well if you're kind of mindful of how you, how you do the roof treatment. So, so we don't think, between the, the maximum building height and the lot coverage requirements, that we have a regulatory environment would prohibit someone from doing a reasonably, and actually fairly large, rebuild. You know, it, it probably really comes down to mostly economics. We, we, we did a little kind of anecdotal analysis of that about the rule of three, and I won't get into the details of that, it's probably beyond my skill set maybe, but the, what we think is that we're probably at a tipping point, right? Where we probably are really close to making the economics make sense, where someone could come in and take a, you know, if they could find a property, that's just one of the challenges, that's around two-hundred thousand dollars, they could come in, rebuild, and under that rule of three logic, you know, have an attractive and quite large six-hundred thousand square foot house to sell at the end of the day.
Six hundred thousand?
Six, what did I say? Six hundred thousand? Square foot?
Wow!
Not perhaps in scale. So, I think we can let that, those economics just kind of work, work themselves out and, and start seeing some of that development, particularly if we think we're recommending to move forward with these two minor zoning code amendments that we think would help for these corner lots. We did put one final topic in the staff report, and that's long been on our kind of list of zoning code amendments, and it's a, it's a little bit of a unique thing in that we have quite a few properties throughout Wheat Ridge, but including in East Ridge, that are, East Wheat Ridge that are zoned R3, which is our only true multifamily zoning district, other than doing a planned residential zoning district. So, R3 allows this kind of very much medium-density residential. But along with having the R3 zoning properties in place, we also have a provision in the code that says, oh, and by the way, if you want to kind of assemble a series of adjacent R3 zone properties, that's fine, but you can't build multifamily housing on them unless the surrounding character of development is predominantly multifamily housing. So, you know, for better or worse, there's obviously reasons for that in terms of maintaining the residential character of certain areas in its current state, but it's, it's kind of contrary to the zoning that's in place for the property that suggests that multifamily housing is appropriate. So, it's a bigger policy issue. We're not necessarily tackling it or recommending that you tackle it tonight, and it would certainly be something that we'd not advise you do without a fair amount of public involvement to understand the impacts and the issues for the community at large. But just wanted to kind of get that back in front of your mind, if that's something you want us to tackle at your direction at some point this year, or next year, or some point in the future. So, really, want to echo Jesse Hill's comments about Lauren's work on this. She really jumped on top of this and made it the number one priority, did some great research, and we look forward to hearing your input.
Thank you, Lauren, for jumping out quickly, and thank you for the report. Ken, do we have some questions from council? Mr. Starker, I believe, got a hand up first?
Thank you. Nice report. Can't say that after I read it, I understand it a whole lot better, but I may understand it a little bit better. When you say that you're moving from a, if we go to a, let me find my thing, the, on a side yard setback, if we reduce it to half, it would result in a ten or fifteen-foot setback from the property line, depending upon the zone, the zone district. So, that's the difference between an R1, an R2, or an R3, or a PUD, or a PBG, or some other zones, and in that, in the East Wheat Ridge, is it the R, what's the difference between ten foot and fifteen, or now twenty and thirty?
We probably don't have a lot of thirty-foot front setbacks in East Wheat Ridge. The thirty-foot setback applies to more of our R1, our larger lot, single-family. I think we probably have more twenty-five and twenty-foot street setbacks, and based on a lot of R2 zoning, R2A, R3 zoning. So, you're gonna see more twenty-five down to twelve-and-a-half, and twenty down to ten in East Wheat Ridge.
And, and if I might to ask our clerk, because she expressed in the public comment that, that those types of changes would not be popular with our citizens, if she would like to opine and give us a little bit more reasoning behind that? Don't have to, but certainly can.
Well, I think it's, has the potential to create, to create a very dramatic facelift, a different atmosphere, and I, I just think it's really interesting that we had that study session, I don't know if it was in January, people have been in and asked about it, when, when the community development folks presented some things that needed upgrade, like signage, lighting, the accessory buildings, those were kind of things that needed tweaked, and I'm just, I was curious when I saw this, is, is this something that you folks asked for? Is there a public outcry out there with the citizens, not the developers, with the citizens, that we need more of this? And if it's not, then I would caution you to examine all of the possibilities. I don't think it's a coincidence that this is coming... I don't think it's a coincidence that this is coming to you right now. I think it's all about the timing for certain projects. And if you want to talk to me about that later on, I'll give you my opinion on that. But when I hear public comment about 38th and DePew, Incarnation, the folks that I've talked to and see have some issues about that, and things that are increase the density even more are something that I don't think the citizens really want. You know, it's like, 20, 30 years ago, some of you that have lived here a long time, when Colorado was so beautiful, and it's like, oh, everybody wanted to come and visit, and then darn, people started moving here, and it sort of wrecked what was beautiful about it. Those of you that remember Governor Lamb didn't want to have the Olympics here because it would draw too many people here and wreck it. And, well, we didn't have the Olympics, but they came here anyway, and so there's all this talk about, we were just such a hot place, and people love it here, and they moved here, and it's like, okay, great, and we want it to be a place for families. At least, I hear you guys say that. And then, this is like, okay, now let's change it. You know, if you like it the way it is, do more of what you have, not change it into something else, because that's not why people are moving here. So I just, I think you should talk to folks before you, and before you make serious decisions about this. Some of it may be real practical, and maybe it's a variance thing that you want to do on a case-by-case basis, but just to blanket, open these possibilities, I would just encourage you to be cautious about it.
Thank you very much. And I had one more follow-up, then, based on that, Mr. John Stone, does it look like that if we were to adopt these two recommendations that you're bringing to us, would those in and of themselves lead to greater density and a necessarily different housing stock than we have now?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, it doesn't change the zoning, so you're fundamentally allowed to do what you're allowed to do. So if it's a single-family zone lot, you're allowed to do single-family, if it's a duplex zone lots, and that's largely what most of these lots are, is our single-family or duplex lots. You know, we're talking about a fairly limited class of lots, and while we're suggesting that this would be applied citywide, I think, you know, 90 percent of it would apply in East Wheat Ridge, where you see lots, because it's a very limited class of lots, right? It's corner lots, it's lots that are 60 feet or less in width. I mean, I think how many of those you see past Wadsworth is, you know, fractional. So, you know, what number it is, that's one thing I don't think we did do in terms of how many corner lots are 60 feet or less in width, but it's, you know, it's maybe, I don't know, a couple dozen in East Wheat Ridge.
Well, if you looked at the, if you looked at the neighborhoods that you surveyed, which was basically 29th to 32nd, and, you know, Sheridan to Fenton, or Harland, you know, most of those blocks are 24, 24 lots. So you've got four out of 24, so that would sit on a corner.
And then they have to be 60 feet or less.
And then they would need to be 60 feet, or, yeah, most of them were 50 by 133 foot, so, thank you.
Well, if you remember, this request did specifically come from a resident who lives in this part of the city, asked us to look at this, because he does have a corner lot.
Okay, we, go ahead.
All right, I guess, to the point of understanding the demand or the interest on the impact on residents, when I look at the statement in the memo that says that no zoning requests or variances have been made to this point, is it because they know that it won't be approved, or is it because that there isn't the rule of three to this point where someone could find it financially feasible to do so? I just, I'm curious to know what kind of demand there would be for this sort of scrape-and-build activity as it is, and whether this, I don't know if this necessarily causes it to happen, but I would like to see some more evidence to the demand prior to making some of these changes, but do we have any other evidence?
I don't. We have not heard a lot of inquiries of people coming in at, you know, to my staff and saying, you know, I'd love to make this investment here, but I can't, I can't do that because of this regulatory challenge. Now, Mr. Hill, when he testified at the March 2 meeting, testified that he believes that there are people that have walked away from properties because they found out, well, their architect, I think the words he used is, their architect looked at it and said, well, you couldn't do it without a variance, and you don't want to do that, you know? It's, from my perspective, I don't know that those people ever came in and inquired about the likelihood of their receiving a variance, but that was their perception, is that that was a regulatory burden that made them make an investment choice someplace else. Ultimately, I think, though, as we make recommendations to you, I mean, regardless of whether, you know, we're seeing a bunch of people come in and say, this is a huge regulatory challenge, we're making a recommendation to you because we think it makes sense, right? I mean, Mr. Starker just mentioned that a typical lot in East Wheat Ridge is 50 feet wide, so a corner lot would have a, potentially, a 50-foot setback, right, between the, on the 50-foot lot, right? So, well, 25 on one side, and 25 in the front, so 30 foot, so they'd have a 20-foot building footprint and 30 feet of setback, so 60 feet of their lot would be unbuildable in width. So, you know, from my perspective, I think that's an unreasonable standard, and that's why when we took a look at it, we thought this makes a lot of sense to take a look at the top.
And I guess it's somewhat hard to ask a developer and architect to go through that regulatory process without any sort of indication of what the outcome might be, but at the same time, those variances and the ability to receive a variance are, in some ways, give the residents an opportunity to see what may be possible if something were to be changed, and it gives that sort of precursor to what may come versus changing everything ahead of time, and then seeing this all come sort of out of the woodwork, so to speak. But I'd be interested to hear more from the residents, and then as well as some potential developers, because I can understand it from a developer's perspective, if the regulatory burden is anything, that they're going to go somewhere else and, you know, look at other places, and they're just not even going to bother dealing with it, they're just going to kind of move on, and they're not necessarily going to raise a red flag or make an issue of it, they're just going to go to where it's available, and so we may not hear anything from them, but I would be interested to hear from kind of both sides to understand what some of the concerns are from residents, and then also from a developer or a homeowner that would want to do this, what is the, what kind of demand are we speaking on? Is it one or two individuals and one or two properties, or is it 50 properties across the entire city? That, those are some of my concerns. So I wouldn't necessarily want to jump on this tonight, but I'm interested in understanding it more.
Just one more point I might add, in terms of how we weigh things that might be appropriate for a variance versus a code amendment, so we don't think that this, we think this makes sense, because I don't think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood. As Ken mentioned, a lot of these, the three subdivisions that we highlighted in the exhibit were platted in the 1890s, so they were developed long before zoning, so most of the setbacks, street-facing side setbacks, are already less than 20 feet, so it would be against the norm to meet the setback that's in our current code. That would be the outlier versus what's already out there. We didn't do an analysis of every side setback, but Mr. Hill actually brought an exhibit into our office a couple of times, where he's measured all of the neighbors along 30th and what their setbacks are, and the average is probably closer to 12 to 15 existing. And so we like to use variances where there's an oddball issue, but where we observe a more widespread pattern is when we start to think that a code amendment might make sense, and that's why we were proposing this.
That's helpful.
Mr. Starker.
And since we're talking about variances, what would be the, what would be the procedure, and what is the process to get a variance? And if someone were to come in and put an offer on a house and say, well, I'll make this contingent upon getting a variance, what is entailed in that?
Well, we updated our variance requirements, oh gosh, probably close to 10 years ago now, but, so we do have fairly flexible and workable variance procedures, including administrative variance options. So a property owner can submit an application, there's a process for doing that, obviously, a pre-application meeting, et cetera, but an application for a variance for up to 50 percent of the development standards, so much like what we're proposing here. So if you had a 20-foot setback requirement, you could request a 10-foot setback administratively. We would review it at a, as a staff. There's a written notice process so that the neighborhood is notified of the request for a variance. The applicants were required to submit a written response to a list of criteria and show that they meet a majority of those applicable criteria. If there are any written objections from the neighborhood, regardless of the amount of the variance request, and those are determined to be legitimate, not just kind of, well, hate my neighbor, kind of oddball stuff, but if there are legitimate concerns about what's being proposed and the appropriateness of it for the, for the area, or whether they meet the zoning criteria, then that triggers a board of adjustment hearing, so that would be scheduled, and there'd be opportunity for public notice as well. So, you know, I think we approve a fair number of administrative variances every year under that framework, and we think it's worked well for a community like Wheat Ridge, where, you know, variances are just necessary, as we've both said tonight, I mean, there's just a lot of oddball situations out there in a community that's largely built up, and that largely was built up without knowing what their zoning would be in the future. So there's a lot of nonconformity out there, a lot of existing conditions that lend themselves to people getting support for a variance, but it, there is some risk, and there is certainly some time involved, and then at the end of the day, you could end up at the board of adjustment, and, not that the board of adjustment does great work, but, you know, you don't know what your result's going to be coming out of that process.
Ms. Wood.
A couple of things. First of all, when you mentioned that you would take the average of surrounding homes for a variance in the, was it the scrape-off cases?
For, for...
New construction, you would take an average of the existing properties?
Well, there's two. So that already is on the books for, for the front setback, front-street setback, and for the rear setback, we're proposing that we add the side-street setback as well to that same rule.
And then do that average, and is, would that be for the whole block, or?
Yeah, I forget what the language is.
Probably need to look at that, if we were going to move forward with that. Right now, it's anything within 200 feet on your block, that makes more sense when you're looking at the short widths of lots. If we were looking at these longer widths, we'd probably need to come up with an appropriate, you know, radius.
Okay. Well, I do think since the majority of the homes already do not conform to the existing standard, I think this is something worth looking into, because if the majority of the homes are already not conforming to the standard, then, you know, making it somewhat easier for homeowners who want to come in and build, that's something we should look at. And my last question was, the homeowner that had requested, did he request a variance? The gentleman that asked originally?
Jesse.
I don't think so.
No, he's not requested a variance.
No, he's come in a couple of times very preliminarily, just to kind of understand what the rules are, but he's not, to my knowledge, at least with us, pursued an actual application.
So he hasn't asked, okay.
And the other, the other component of a variance, just in terms of the application, so in terms of when it would be appropriate to request, is you really do need to have a site plan and elevation, so you're committed to some extent to your project. You can't really speculatively say, like, a setback here, but I haven't designed my site yet.
So there's some finance?
The nature of the criteria is such that, you know, we have to make a determination that it hasn't altered the essential character of the area, so that, you know, often gets back to architecture and their treatment, and making sure that their, you know, roof pitches and materials are going to be consistent with the neighborhood, which allows us to support them moving forward with the variance request. And they need to understand how the whole interior of the site's going to work, right? So they need a really solid floor plan so that they can say, we need a six-foot setback variance, not a seven-foot, not an eight-foot, but a six-foot. It's very specific, and if they get that wrong, they could come in and have to amend it. Another thing to note is that once you're granted a variance, it's good for six months. Now, there are some ability to grant extensions to that, but if you're going to pull the trigger on pulling a building permit within six months of getting the variance, you need to kind of be ready to go, you know, because you need to have architectural plans that you can then take out to bid, get contractor bids, get through the building permit review process, so there's kind of a ticking clock once you get the variance to, so you do have to be ready to go when you make that variance application.
So you have to have quite a bit into it before you get to the variance possibilities? Okay. Ms. Davis?
You know, I would support, I think, you know, the plans, or the recommendations in here are reasonable. I don't think any bit of this is changing the makeup of the neighborhood, and we're not asking to scrape it and, you know, put everything on every square inch of the property, so I think that's reasonable. And so I'd like to get a consensus on moving forward with this, but before that, I'd also like to make a comment as far as some of the input that Ms. Shaver had mentioned, because I do think that, as a Wheat Ridge native, 48 years, you know, I do think we've seen change in Wheat Ridge. I do think that there's, there's parts of our, you know, there's parts of Wheat Ridge that is what people want. I think big sprawling ranch houses or quaint little neighborhoods, and I think Wheat Ridge has a lot of all of those assets, but I think, you know, I think the one thing is, I remember three years ago, sitting, when we talked about Perrin's Row, with people saying, there's no way, there's no way those are going to sell, and they're all sold.
They're all sold.
You know, so I think that also creating diversity is a good thing for our city. It might not be what I want, it was something that I would have wanted, you know, 20 years ago as a young professional, because I didn't want to deal with my yard, so it might not be something I want, but it's something someone else wants. So I don't feel, I feel strongly that we shouldn't discriminate against maybe some diversity, because I think that's a good thing. I mean, I'll also stress, I have neighbors that live down the street from me, love them to death, but they're getting older, they have big yards and big houses, and I had told them about the cottage homes that are going to be on Yukon, they're like, Christie, you know, where do I get the information? I'd like to see that. So again, you know, we have some of our folks that might be not needing the big homes, the big yards, and if we can keep them in Wheat Ridge in a newer little cottage home that's in a cute new little development, or the stairs might get them on Perrin's Row, but, you know, I mean, those are for somebody. But I think what I also like to see is the diversity. It's not that we're changing the entire city, and I know we all see it happen, we see it happen in Wash Park, we see it happen over by Sloane's Lake, that all of a sudden, in comes this, you know, contemporary-looking house next to, you know, all the old neat-looking homes, but, you know, I think it's a diversity that I think all cities are experiencing, and I would just hate to turn my back on some of that, because I think it also, in many situations, it still improves that property from what it is today. So I would like to make a consensus to move forward with this, but I just...
There's two of them, there's code amendment number one, which was the setbacks.
I would like to make a consensus with both, one and two.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald, are you voting, or?
I'm voting.
You're voting. Are we ready for that consensus? We do have, do we have enough? One, two, three, four, five? We're good. So we will bring that forward, then. Do you need any comment, or whatever, on the R3 development that you mentioned, that possibility of bringing those lots together?
Kind of thrown that out there, I think, to council, and, you know, it's been out there before, so if you want us to take a look at it, we're ready to do that, but, like I said, it's a bigger policy issue, so if the time's not ripe, that's fine.
I would be interested in that information at a later date, myself.
I think so. I'm just getting that sense.
Because we do need different types of housing, and if there are developers out there interested in compiling like a townhouse situation or something like that, I would be interested in how that would affect us.
Do we have consensus on that, to go ahead and look at that a little further down the road?
At a later date.
At a later date? We do. You just got my work to do.
We'll keep it on the list.
Okay, great. I think we can move on to the citizen survey now.
Thanks, Ken and Lauren.
Thank you very much. Ken and Lauren.
Go and catch the end of the game. It's 4239, Wisconsin.
Okay, please just sit tight and don't postpone this item to another meeting.
Okay, please just sit tight and don't postpone this item to another meeting. Just quickly, in terms of the timeline for the citizen survey, we're at a point where we really need to make decisions this evening about the questions, given that we want to get the survey, the first round of surveys mailed out by the end of the month. And so in terms of the staff memo that was included in your packet, I outlined several things. And I'll jump to the second page in terms of talking about the questions that were added for the 2015 survey. Questions twenty-two and twenty-three are captured under a new section, which we titled Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Main Street. And those were questions that we've had in a previous citizen survey. However, we added questions twenty-four and twenty-five, which hopefully capture features of the Main Street and Street with designation issue that the city's been discussing. Other policy questions that were included in this draft of the survey include questions twenty-six and twenty-seven, as well as bicycle connectivity-related questions that are found on twenty-eight, found in twenty-eight and twenty-nine. We did include infrastructure funding questions slash priorities, which are included in questions thirty and thirty-one. And then you'll see that question three is a new question to the survey, which gauges reasons for living in Wheat Ridge. And then question seventeen, which is a victim-related to crime question that we can cross-tab with a couple of other questions. I think that's question sixteen and question eighteen. So if we want to jump back up to taking overall input, and then if you want to dive specifically into certain questions, we can do that.
Ms. Davis is ready to jump in.
Well, one of the things that I would like to make a recommendation right now, and then we can also include some of the other discussion, is I do think that what Wheat Ridge AT&T, some of their recommendations as far as like just language change from mass transit planning to connectivity to public transit, you know, they, I think they had a lot of good language change. And it's all in an email that we all received at five sixteen PM. But I do think that none of the language really changed the intent of the question, but I think it was a better language, especially like one of the ones that I remember was, you know, it was a softer, it wasn't so negative. I can't remember where it was. But I, I, I would recommend to make all their requested changes, because I think that they're, you know, I think the one that was negative, can we replace support opposed with value, so that it, you know, again, it's not so, you know, not-
Confronted.
Yeah. So, so I would like to make that recommendation right off, is that we kind of wordsmith the language around their request.
Discussion on that? Yep, that sounds favorable. Other things you'd like to change, or?
Uh, yeah. I, I, one of the things that I think is pretty clear in the response that I got to the to-be vote was that people don't think of us as having a downtown. And so I would like to change references to downtown to something like city center, so that that loaded language, I, because that is loaded language, and just that language in itself invalidates the question. So that's all. I, I just want to change-
Is it, are you talking about question twenty-two?
Uh, yeah, I was thinking of twenty-two and the ti, the title there, Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Main Street. And it appears other places also, I think. But I just want to get rid of the loaded language.
Any thoughts on that? Anybody disagree with that?
So you switch it from Main Street to what?
Uh, town center or?
City center.
City center, something like that.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yep. Are we good on that one? And Mr. Urban, sounds like he has one, or looks like he does.
On question number twenty-five, the third option down says, the preliminary design in parentheses is approved by city council. Which preliminary design was that?
I don't-
Probably would have been the latest one. We didn't get specific.
Oh, yeah, October eleventh, two thousand and eleven.
Oh, that's the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor plan, probably, two thousand and eleven?
But, but that, but it then goes on to say for reconstructing the street, that's not, that particular design was just with respect to restriping, but it didn't, my concern is that we haven't- But the, but the corridor plan is, is another option down below that talks about that.
I believe the intent was the latest one, but we didn't get specific.
Preliminary design approved by city council for restructuring the street. Yeah, I, I, no matter what, doesn't need, that needs to be clarified, because that's confusing, so.
I just, I guess my concern is, I would rather that the phrase approved by city council be removed from the question, because then that makes it as though, not knowing which council voted on that, or if you put a year by it, that's fine, or more description as to what design is being spoken about. But to my knowledge, we haven't approved a design under this current council, so I don't want to confuse people.
I think it is confusing. We can, we can come up with some different answers.
And then, the other concern I had is throughout the survey, the term Wheat Ridge, city of Wheat Ridge, city, there, there's some inconsistencies as to the reference to the city of Wheat Ridge. In some respects, it talks about the city government. In other respects, it just talks about the phrase Wheat Ridge, so.
You'd like to make sure that everybody understands that it's all the same?
Right. I don't know if there's an appropriateness in certain questions to only use the phrase Wheat Ridge versus the city of Wheat Ridge, or, or vice versa, but there is some inconsistency across the different questions. So that would be just, I'm okay with Wheat Ridge being defined as Wheat Ridge versus the city of Wheat Ridge, or vice versa, whatever it is, we just need to stick with it, or have a defined purposes to why we're using one phrase over the other.
Zach, that's something that, quite honestly, I leave up to National Research Center to come up with. I, I know there's a method to it in terms of city and Wheat Ridge, city government specifically you find in the questions related to city staff and customer service. So I can certainly ask them that question again and make sure we're being very consistent with it. So I appreciate that feedback, but I can't explain to you now-
Sure.
-why it is the way it is, other than we defer to them.
Sure. And then with, with respect to the police, there was a question number seventeen, please indicate whether or not you have done each of the following the past twelve months. And I guess I'd like to see whether people have called the non-emergency number or not, that knowing that you don't, your only reason for calling the police isn't necessarily to report a crime, but maybe you're, you know, reporting suspicious activity, or you're, you're just reaching out because you have a concern, but it's not necessarily that the only reason you'd ever contact the police is just to report a crime, but you're, you're concerned about a neighbor, you know, or, I understand that there's a non-emergency number element up above that, or I'm not sure where that one was at.
Question six, towards the bottom.
But, so, I guess my question would be is, it seems like that limits what people might be reaching out to the Wheat Ridge Police Department for, is either they're a victim of a crime, or they want to report a crime, but-
I think the intent was, we, we can change this though, but the intent was to have this so you could cross-tab if, for the question about how you, how safe do you feel in the community? So if somebody was a victim of a crime in the community, or reported a crime, you, you cross-tab those with the ones that they maybe don't feel as safe, because they've had, they've had a criminal activity happen to them. So I think that was the original intent, why we added that, but-
Okay.
I'm trying to think if adding a question, if they've called for non-emergency, if that would matter, we could-
I think we could look at it, yeah.
How that would help cross-tapping and-
What I've seen with some residents is that they may call the non-emergency number with respect to something suspicious, and depending on the response time to that call, they either will or will not call on other issues. And so it, it impacts that as well. And then on number eighteen, we talk about solving violent crimes or solving property crimes is, I mean, there's nothing in there talking about prevention of anything. It's more just, it talks about the priorities of the police department, and it's more, it's all reactive elements. There's no proactive elements.
That's a prevention question, or options in there?
That, because I, I want it to be known that the police department, as much as they're reacting to situations, they're also actively involved in preventing-
Which they are.
Sure.
And to see if residents are recognizing that value of preventing crime. And, and if the, the chief has looked at this and they're okay with these questions as is, that's fine, but I just, I'd like to reflect some of the proactive steps they take as well.
Yes, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Well, I guess back to your reporting a crime, I don't think you ever report a crime, because it may be a suspected crime, but it's not really a crime until you've adjudicated the, the case and, and done it. So it may be a suspected crime.
Okay. Got that, Helen?
I do.
Okay, that's lawyer talk. Anybody else? Councilmember Davis?
Uh, so just something, something quick. I know that Ms. Calamino had a couple suggestions. I, I can't remember what they all were, but I, I guess if we could just look at those for-
Similar to the AT.
Yeah, yeah. So just, that would be my only other request.
Got some notes on that.
Good.
I'll, you, but she had one really good one that we haven't talked about. I can't remember where it is or, oh, it was, I think it was openness to change. I mean, I don't like those words.
Number four, openness to change?
Yeah, the suggestion was on number four, care, add characteristics such as, ask about openness of community to progress, growth, change, advancement, improvements. So, you know, that's something we could look at in terms of adding-
It needs to be words.
-a few things on four.
So you have a copy then of what she?
I do.
Great, great. I'm sorry.
And one other thing, would this be invalidated if we ask people if in the future they would like to receive it online?
No, the way you would handle that is, we can provide an online survey option. It would be a non-scientific survey. So what NRC recommends is that you conduct the scientific survey, which is the mails survey, where we mail it to three thousand random households amongst the four districts, to keep it scientific. And then we would also provide an online survey option. So we'd keep the results separate, but you'd have two different lenses to look at that.
But also, is it this year, even the people, even under the scientific survey, they're, they move online and fill it out instead of hand? Isn't that an option this year? No?
No, we weren't going to do that. We were going to leave it.
Okay.
Mail, to keep it simple, but that's okay. So we can provide that option, and that'll cost us another twelve hundred dollars, which I, I can add the online piece to it. We have never done that, but more and more communities are doing it. So if it's something that you'd like to look at, we can do that.
Thoughts on that?
I'm interested in that. I think that'd be well worth it. I think we have a lot of people that would love to get online and give responses, and do keep it separate, and
They'd still get the paper's notification in the mail, but they would give, be given a link to go and online with a code, probably, right?
I think we, I'm not sure you're understanding.
It, so- There's online and then-
There's two, two different things. So the, the, the mail survey, which we've traditionally done, the scientific survey, we would keep that methodology the same. So we do a postcard before the end of the month. We do a first mailing, and we do a second mailing. And then for the online survey, what I do is, NRC would provide a link. I'd post it to the city website, and people would access that survey, which would all be controlled by NRC. And then they would compile the data from that survey on there and provide us with a separate report. So we're scheduled to have NRC come in in late July, early part of August, and so they would present two sets of data to you.
And that's twelve hundred dollars? Or is it, or is it twelve hundred to send out the mail survey, and you have the option to either respond by mail or respond online?
The online survey is a thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, to be exact. We wouldn't mix the two, because again, the mail survey is a random sampling of three thousand households. So we'd keep that piece separate and then do the online survey. I mean, I guess if somebody wanted to do both, they could. But again, if they, we'd want to encourage, if you get a copy of the survey in the mail, to complete that. And we've always had good response rates with our citizen survey. We typically have thirty to thirty-three percent response rate. So I, I think, you know, an online survey would definitely give an option to individuals who would ask the question, well, why can't, why didn't I get a copy of the survey? Why can't I fill out the survey?
Councilmember Davis?
So I, I, I like the idea of, of being able to go online and get a survey if you didn't get one mailed to you, because I didn't get one mailed to me last year. And I would have liked to do the survey, you know, so I understand that. But I also, you know, there's a couple of things I have a question about, is like, so is there a way that it, like, that somebody has to put their address and phone number and, you know, so that I don't, I can't do it sixteen times or whatever?
No.
So I could just, like-
I, I'm pretty certain I'll, I'll double check, but I mean, that's one of the things about the online survey that-
Yeah. And then my other thing is, is okay, so we have two surveys, one's scientific and one's not, and there's two different data. I mean, like, what are we going to do with it? I mean, so you, I mean, are you going to believe one over the, you know? So I guess my thing is, is if we do two different methods of surveying, and the outcomes are the, are the same, then it's like gravy, we're good. But the minute it's not, then it's like, well, this one was scientific. Well, we paid twelve hundred for this one, and it really wasn't scientific, but, you know, who knows? So I, I almost, although I'm the one of those people that wanted the survey and didn't get it, I really feel like we should stick to the, save ourselves twelve hundred and thirty dollars and stick to the mail-in one. Because if you get two different results, it's, it's like, what do you do?
Much like the focus group was, was different on the report we listened to tonight, Mr. Customman Fitzgerald.
Uh, I, we're going to have to take the scientific one as the, as the primary one. The online, it would be just for fun, because we'd have to, we, because it's not scientific, right? Well, the reason I bring that up, though, is because people feel, I mean, we've heard that people feel that our communication is not good. And I was seeing that as a way to allow people to participate and communicate with us. And the second thing is, and I'm, do not, do not kill me when I say this, it would be great if we could start building an email address of citizens, so that we could communicate better with them.
Good point. Mr. Starker?
Well, I think, you know, if you wanted to do, we, we do this mail-in survey every other year. Perhaps we would look at the odd years doing a, an online survey.
Interesting thought.
And there, then, then you're, you're sort of not getting two sets of data for whatever that does you. I mean, that, I think it's better to have one set of data. It was, it was this, you know, a qualified, third-party administered survey, and the other one is sort of a preference poll, if you will, or a popularity contest on these questions. Because, I mean, if you can fill it out a zillion times, you know, we might have fifty or sixty thousand people in Wheat Ridge, who knows?
Any thoughts about that?
That's fine. I do have one other suggestion on top of that.
You want to add another suggestion?
Yeah.
And that is?
In question number thirty-three, when it talks about the, the different sources of news, there's a couple of different references to Nextdoor and the Facebook page. I'd like to see if we can add the Wheat Ridge Neighbors Facebook Group as a list of potential news sources, because there is about twelve hundred members of that. And the I Neighbors, I've never even heard of that. I don't know what that is. That's the police department.
I Neighbors, is it similar to Nextdoor Neighbors? It's a, it's a, it's a service that neighborhoods can sign up to, yeah. You're, you're talking about a specific Facebook site that somebody set up? Or just Facebook? I'm sorry, which one did you say, neighbor?
There's several.
Wheat Ridge Neighbors Facebook Group, or?
You know, what I, what I might suggest is that we split out- You know, what I, what I might suggest is that we, um, split out, maybe drop Facebook page, and then do a parenthetical, uh, Wheat Ridge Neighbor, I think, yeah, I'm, there's several of them, yeah. Yeah, there's three or four of them now, that have developed, so that's certainly something we could put in parentheticals. Would that get to the gist of what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, but to not measure them each individually, but to just.
Facebook pages.
Facebook pages.
Wheat Ridge-specific Facebook pages, maybe? Because it, that does seem to be a place where people do get, uh, their news.
Uh, I don't know if we answered the question about whether to do a paper survey, as well as off-year, I'm seeing heads going up around.
I, I would make a consensus that we just focus on the paper survey this year.
Okay.
And if we want to take that up at another time, then we can do that at another time.
All right, do we have consensus on that? We're just doing a face, a paper survey this year. I believe we're done with this?
Yes, we're done.
Okay. All right, let's go through elected officials' reports, and then we can adjourn the meeting. Tracy, do you have anything for me?
Well, Lauren left, but it looks like our last house for the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority has got an offer on it, and so, and then we, we are still waiting to hear back on the Fruitdale Project, and, and the, the, the new bidder, I guess, and, yeah, potential bidder on that one.
Okay, Ms. Davis, do you have anything tonight, that you'd like to contribute?
Um, I don't have any updates on renewal Wheat Ridge. I know numbers are still being crunched, and ideas still being worked on, so I don't have any updates on that, so to speak. I know we will have meetings in April and May. I know the folks in District Two got one of these cards in the mail, I'm actually having three different outreach meetings, one's on April eighteenth at Care Bear Bakery, from nine-thirty to ten-thirty, one's Thursday, um, at Colorado Plus, from six to seven PM, and, um, the other one is Wednesday, June tenth, from two to three at Grammy's Goodies on Harland Street, so, um, anyone's welcome, this was mailed to, of course, District Two, uh, but anyone's welcome to join, and the dates are also on my website, which is christydaviswr.com. So you can look up there and get the dates too, if you are interested.
Thank you, and you'll keep us informed as we go along, as we get closer, right? Ms. Councilman Starker.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Red Rocks Community College this Thursday is, is sponsoring a very interesting historical event to look at the, and honor the veterans of World War II, talking about things that happened during the war, both in the war front and the home front. Uh, I believe the opening ceremonies are somewhere around ten or ten-thirty in the morning, and they'll have seminars throughout the day, I believe, and it looks like a very interesting, uh, program I'm planning to attend. That's it, thank you.
Um, I'd like to, uh, report that the Wheat Ridge Business District, um, has been working with the Cataluma Chi Building, and, uh, we've given the landlord of that building a matching grant for exterior paint and for landscaping, and there is a new tenant, the Wheat Ridge Learning Academy, and we've given them a matching grant for a sign. Uh, that's the first thing. And the second thing is, last week, um, staff held a meeting about the Thirty-second Avenue bicycle lanes. Uh, it was well-attended, it was a great presentation. Essentially, from, uh, the, in the east section, they're just going to restart, re-stripe to add, uh, bike lanes and signs. And in the middle section, which is Wads to Kipling, uh, they're going to widen about two feet in some places, uh, so that there's a three-to-six-foot bike lane, and, um, re-stripe, uh, they will narrow the driving lanes a little bit. Uh, and in the west, one half-mile, they will add symbols and signs. So, we will then have a bike lane all the way from Sheridan to, uh.
Youngfield.
Yeah.
Four and a half miles.
Right. Somebody asked about going under the freeway, and the staff said, good luck.
Councilman Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to take a moment and to recognize Sergeant Armstrong of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, he was the coordinator and the team captain for the Saint Baldrick's Foundation event that, uh, the Wheat Ridge Police Department and the Wheat Ridge Fire hosted on Saturday at Amici's Restaurant, and we were able to raise several thousand dollars, and as you can tell, I've changed my hairstyle just a little bit, and that's in, uh, that's where I was able to participate and have my head shaved, and, uh, I was able to raise about twelve hundred dollars to support this effort, and so, thank you to all you donated, thank you, Councilmember Starker, for donating, I appreciate that. And, uh, just wanted to reach out and say thank you to the Wheat Ridge Police Department for stepping up and making that event happen, and was excited to participate, and hopefully my hair grows back. But that's it for tonight, thank you.
People may have heard about it, but there's going to be a car cruise on May ninth, and this is working in conjunction with Cypher Specialties. There's going to be a big car show over at Cypher Specialties, uh, off of Forty-Fourth and Harland, and then the cruise will be on Forty-Fourth Avenue from Harland all the way down to Ward Road. We've had a lot of businesses sponsor, a lot of businesses interested, and, um, over a couple hundred cars are already signed up, and police department's involved, it's going to be a really interesting, fun day, a fun, you know, can't have, let Golden have all the fun, so, we're going to have our own cruise, and it will end at Anderson Park, with trophies and awards for the different cars, so, May ninth on that one. And then, I, I have a question, are we, I hadn't heard about a retreat, and are we going to do that, or? I was just curious.
Mayor Portam and I have been talking about it, and, um, haven't planned one. Yeah, so if it's something you want to discuss, we can discuss, or, we, we're thinking maybe know this year, but if you guys want to do something, we can.
Okay, um, let me add a few things, um, to that, to that, um, cruise on Forty-Fourth, there's a possibility we will see the car that the high school students have built, which is really cool, yeah, that'd be really cool, if they, they, I don't know, I guess Genevieve's going to drive it around, is that the deal? No. Metro Mayor's, I went to that, um, still a lot of action on SB fifteen, one-seventy-seven, that's our one, as far as the, um.
Construction.
Construction defects, um, still crossing our fingers on that one, it's, it's, who knows? Uh, they're also very involved in the, the TIF one, that has been proposed, and they're looking to, to try to get some information about, the TIF one is where they, they're wanting to change the, the nature of the TIF, uh, looking for information about what, what the values of those properties around those TIFs, how much they go up in value, uh, because there's not much data on that, and that would be very helpful to have that. We should be getting a big report from Dr. Cog, the one we missed, because, uh, our city manager turned out the lights for the night. That's on the, the four-point-seven million federal sustainability, um, the grant that we received, and we'll get some information on that. I have one more thing, um, had the first Cultural Loop meeting last week, which is the art program for Thirty-Eighth Avenue, a lot of excited people about that, a lot of work to do on it, but I think it's going to be great, I think it's going to work. And I don't know if I am ready here or not, but I guess it's time to let go, meeting is adjourned.
I wanted to tell the public something, and I think, um, Mr. Goff, the, um, we got an email in-house about the Laserfish being, um, were upgraded on Thursday, that will also include the public, right? They won't have access to, um, they're, the IT is doing this huge, good server upgrade, and so, um, I just wanted council people, and also the folks out there, to know that if they want to try to use the Laserfish, or check any of the archives, on Thursday from about nine to three, that little window in there, it won't be available to them.